Everyone, we are live. We are live.
We're ready. It's not quite six o'clock.
You got a few seconds.
Yeah. Okay, we're ready to get started. So, welcome everyone to the August 11th, 2020 Board of Freeholders Meeting. We're going to start off with a roll call. Lou, were you on?
Yes. Freeholders after.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best. Duffy.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Happy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lizar.
Here. Can we please have the announcement of the open public meeting?
Public notice, take notice, the Passaic County Board of Freeholders on January 6, 2020, adopted resolution R-2020-0001, which calls for the location of the conference and regular meetings scheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday, August 11, 2020, at 5:30 PM and 6:00 PM, respectively. Pursuant to administrative order 20-01 issued by Passaic County Administrator, closing the administration building to nonessential personnel and the public of March 18, 2020, at 8:30 AM, the Board is canceling the conference agendas for these meetings and shall hold the regular meeting at 6:00 PM with no members of the public physically present and authorized under NJSA 10:4-12A. If a member of the public wishes to place a public comment on record, please email public@passaiccountynj.org stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the Board no later than August 11, 2020, at 5:00 PM, respectively, and by participating in Facebook Live or via the Board's WebEx meeting platform. The clerk of the Board shall read the same to the public record. Moreover, some members of the Board will be participating telephonically pursuant to the Board's bylaws and compliance with NJSA 10:4-1S-ETSEC. Official action will be taken. This was placed, this public notice was placed in the June 26 record and the Herald News.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance We're going to take a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the armed forces of states. There are two people in particular that I would like to recognize. Our own Kathleen Karen and Isam Khalifa, who both passed away within the last two weeks. It's going to be a great loss to the county. And Patterson Councilwoman Magda O'Keeffe, who just passed away yesterday. Please keep them all in your prayers. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 14, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
TJ. Hey TJ.
Yes. Hi. I can't hear Lou.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Happy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lizar.
Yes. We're going to move on to free. Is Dr. Gungill on this call, on this meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we usually start with your update. So, Dr. Gungill, if you could.
Sure. Micah? All right, so next slide, please. Good afternoon, evening, everyone. Update as of today, August 11. This is day 151 since the pandemic COVID-19 entered into Passaic County. Slide please. This is our usual dashboard where I show you where we stand globally. And so there's the worldwide data, United States, New Jersey, and where we are in New Jersey. So currently, we have 17,665 confirmed cases and 1,094 confirmed deaths. Next slide, please. All right, we remain in the top five counties for COVID-19 positive cases. Bergen has been at the front of this. They've been the epicenter for the state and they remain there at this time. Next slide, please. This is the Epi curve for Passaic County from the beginning of this pandemic, of March 14 to now. And you could see from this slide that at the very beginning, when we started, we started to go up, our curve started to go up. And so between the end of March and early May is where you see a concentration of cases. And as we became used to, used to wearing masks and practicing social distancing and so on, you can see that we really did crush that curve. And from about the middle of May until today, you can see about half of this, of this slide represents a minimal number of cases. And, and it really is showing, demonstrates the work that was done by all of us, from the governor with closing everything, to the freeholders with closing all of the offices, to the public and so on, enforcing the rules. And so that's why we're seeing that nice level sort of endemic COVID-19 in our population. Next slide, please. So this case shows COVID-19 by municipality. And again, I have Patterson's data. And you can see on the, on the left that Patterson represents 39% of cases of COVID-19 in Passaic County, followed by Passaic City with 90%, with 16, Wayne with 8%. And the other municipalities, these 12 municipalities are a combination of 2% of cases of positive COVID-19 cases. So again, 39 Patterson, 19 for Passaic, 16 Clifton, and 8% Wayne. Next slide, please. All right, this slide shows a breakdown by gender. Right now, it's 50/50, male and female. And on the right of the slide shows the breakdown by age group. And age group is grouped into 10-year increments. So far, you can see in the middle that tallest slide, the blue, the tallest column is ages 50 to 59. 19% of COVID-19 positive cases in Passaic County are represented by this age group, followed by 40 to 49%, I mean, 40 to 49-year-olds and 30 to 39-year-olds. The next one after that is 60 to 69-year-olds. So these are the people who have tested positive. As you can see, large number of them are in the 50, 59 age group. Next slide, please. Okay, so this begins some other pieces of data regarding deaths in Passaic County. Next slide. Next slide. All right, so this slide represents where people are dying from in Passaic County COVID-19. Again, you can see Patterson at 30% of the deaths. But remember, Patterson had 39% of the cases, and which is almost 40%, and 30% of deaths. Passaic City, which had 19% of cases, have about the same, 20% of the deaths. Notice, though, that Wayne is now number three in deaths in Passaic County at 17%, whereas on the cases, there were only 9%. Clifton at 30% deaths, and I believe that they were approximately the same in cases. So the, the big change here is Patterson representing 30% of the deaths and Wayne then doubling in deaths for people who were positive for COVID-19. No reason. Next slide, please. All right, so this is death by gender.
Dr. Gungill, could I, could you hear me? On that last, if Mike could just go back to that last slide for one minute. The, the 30%, though, is a 30% of all deaths in Passaic County, not 30% of all cases in Patterson, right? Just to be clear.
So, so this slide and two slides back represents the countywide data. So 30% of all deaths due to COVID in Passaic County were from residents of the city of Patterson.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anytime. Next slide, please. All right, so this one shows the deaths by gender. You can see that male, excuse me, 57% of those who died from COVID-19 in Passaic County were male, 41% female, 2% unknown. Yeah, so it's very, it's very interesting how that changes every month. And one of these months, one of these months, I'm going to put that together and show you how that has changed over time. Next slide, please. Oh, wait, wait. Can you hang on a second? Sorry. So the, the, the pie next to it, the pie chart next to it, shows you the deaths by, by age. And you could see on that slide that people who are between the ages of 80 and 89 years old make up about 25% of the deaths due to COVID-19. The next 10-year age group is 70 to 79%, which makes up 22% of the people who died from COVID in Passaic County. So just between those two age groups, 70 to 79, 80 to 89 years old, you could see 46% or almost half of the people who died from COVID-19 in Passaic County since this began are people in those two, between the ages of 70 and 90 years old. All right, next slide, please. All right, so the state started to do more breakout of data. And this one, but this is a New Jersey dashboard data. So we do not have that data yet for Passaic County. But I just wanted to put it out there because as soon as we get it, I'll be able to share it with you. Break it down by recent ethnicity in Passaic County, you'll see 53.3% of the people who died in New Jersey were white, 19.4% Hispanic, 18.5% Black, 5.4% Asian, and 3.4% Other. And Other could be any of those categories, but did not, it could also be people who did not disclose their race and ethnicity. Next slide, please. This slide is also a Jersey-wide slide. And it just shows you the underlying, the known underlying conditions for COVID-19. Please note that the number of people for whom that data is available is under 7,000. So it's not a large sample size. But you could see predominantly, people are dying from heart disease, from diabetes, other chronic diseases. And so it's, it's, it's an interesting thing to see because we already know that for the industrial nations, including the US, including New Jersey, that people are dying mostly from heart disease. Sir, and we also know that diabetes is an underlying condition for heart disease. So when you put all of these conditions into the, into the mix with COVID, these people are affected more than other groups of individuals. Next slide, please. All right, so this slide is a little bit busy, but it's a comparison slide to show you each municipality in Passaic County, the total population based on 2018 data, the total cases, deaths, but the breakout, and I showed you this, a similar slide to this last time. And I want to point out to you is, is that the seniors, where they are, affects how Passaic County is represented in cases and in deaths. And we're going to use the first line, which is Bloomingdale. And you could see that in Bloomingdale, 70% of the people who had COVID-19 tested positive were in the community. But if you look at the last column, 67% of the deaths in Bloomingdale were from people who resided at the long-term care facility. All right, and Clifton, it's not so, it's not, not, not quite the same. Again, it's interesting to look at numbers because it tells you a different story. Clifton, 95% of the cases were in the community. But in long-term care, 30% of the deaths. So it's a little bit more, I don't want to say evenly distributed, but it's not as dramatic as in Bloomingdale. In Passaic City, you see 92% were community cases. 8% were long-term care cases. But 26% of deaths in Passaic due to COVID were from long-term care residents. And the same thing goes through, I think the most dramatic one is probably Wayne. Wayne with 26% community cases. And I guess it's the same, and long-term care deaths are 83%. So 74, 83, 26, 17. It's not so bad. But again, the, the, the big, the story with this slide in general is that though we have many cases, it's very, from the breakout that I'm providing here, it shows that long-term care facilities in Passaic County, similar to the state of New Jersey and in many other states, the residents of long-term care are affected most than in the, in the, in the regular community. And that could be for underlying health conditions, age is a factor. They're a vulnerable population because they also are in one place. So they're almost like sitting, whereas other people have other places that they move around, won't have that contact with the long-term care residents. It's, it's not the same. All right, next slide, please. All right, so this, this is a slide that, the first one, the first time you saw this was last month, where you had asked for information regarding per capita cases. I also put in fatality rate and mortality. Again, cases per capita is the general population from that municipality. The fatality rate is people who die, who were sick from COVID that died from it for that municipality. And the mortality rate is how you present it per 1,000 population. So that's why, that's what the numbers look like. If we pick one queue.
Dr. Gungill, if I could interrupt one more time. But the, and again, I just, for people who may be watching this at home, the, the per capita cases is only those who were tested, right? So of the 8,000 people who were, who live in Bloomingdale, not all 8,000 people have been tested, right? Maybe, maybe only a quarter of them have been tested.
Maybe only a quarter of them have been tested. But the per capita represents, Mr. De Nova, the entire population that reside in that municipality. So that's why the number is so low.
Well, the fatality, the fatality rate I get, but, but it's, it's.
So in the second, so in the second column, the numerator.
We can't say that 2% of the, of Bloomingdale were positive, right? We could only say 2% of Bloomingdale who tested were positive. There could have been plenty of people who were never tested.
There's plenty of people who were never tested, but the per capita represents all of the people, Mr. De Nova.
So, so the numerator is the number of positive tests and the denominator is the total municipal population?
I'm sorry, which, which one are you asking me?
The, the same one that Mr. De Nova was asking you about. I want to make sure I understand. So the numerator of cases per capita is number of positive tests? And the denominator is the total municipal population?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the couple slides back, you can see that for Bloomingdale, there were, for Bloomingdale, there were 185 cases. If you divide that by the total population, which is 8072, right, you will get .022, which is about, which you multiply that by 100 and you'll get the per capita, which, go back, there you go. So that's a 2%. Okay. All right, and the fatality, I think, so this one is from the people who tested positive for COVID-19. So that, that would be the denominator and the numerator is the people who died. And that's all a rate, so that's times 100.
I have a question. The, the higher rates are municipalities or cities that had long-term care facilities? Maybe, that's what it appears to be, is that correct?
Okay, let's see. Well, are you talking about fatality rate now?
I'm talking about the mortality rate period per, per thousand. It, it looks like those places that have a larger percentage of long-term care facilities seem to have slightly larger mortality rates per thousand. And I'm guessing that's what the effect is.
So this would be the, no, no, the, the best way to look at that one would be with the fatality rate, because it tells how dangerous the organism is.
Well, even that, even that, that they're elevated for, let's see, Bloomingdale, Wayne, Waukegan. So that sort of fits, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is that you can also see it better with the fatality rate because those numbers are dramatically different than the, than the small, looking at the small numbers, right?
I get it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay, welcome. Next slide, please. All right, so overall, Passaic County, so this population is a population estimate as of 2018. And this is overall cases per capita and overall fatality and overall mortality. Next slide, please. All right, so I broke this out again and probably I'll break it out until, until it's better. At the height of the outbreak, we had 30 long-term care facilities that had COVID-19 outbreaks. Currently, there are 15 of them that still have it. And, and just as a disclaimer, I want to say about two weeks ago, the CDC and NIH changed their criteria for a long-term care to remain as an outbreak from, from two months to three months. In other words, initially, they had said, once they go through two incubation period and then another month, so then you could remove, then if you have another case at the end of two months, that would be a new outbreak. Now they're saying it's the same outbreak. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts with the definitions. And so earlier in the pandemic and now, criteria have changed. So I don't know, looking back, when we really try to crunch the numbers and see what, what the result of the pandemic is, what that's going to look like for us. Anyway, so overall, there were over 1,300 residents of long-term care facilities who tested positive. Currently, there are only about 568. Note, please note that many individuals have moved, have passed on, but many have also survived. 816 staff members overall have tested positive for COVID-19 in long-term care places. Currently, there are 438 staff members. And that's always a difficult piece to manage because once people leave their jobs and they go home to their private lives, there's no real control over what they do in terms of, of social distancing, in terms of wearing their masks and hand washing and sanitizing. So it becomes very challenging for long-term care facilities to maintain being COVID-free when, when staff are continually bringing it back. So you know, I applaud those, those long-term care facilities who are able to manage their COVID-19 outbreaks. Okay, 403 residents have died and 15 staff members have died from COVID-19. Next slide, too. All right, next topic is COVID-19 testing. As you know, we tested almost 1,600 people at our drive-through testing site at William-Patterson University. Currently, we still have two testing programs very active. The test at home, which has tested over 5,500 individuals, and the mobile testing in the community, which has tested over 7,500 individuals. Next slide, please. Okay, so we are now in our second round of community testing, of mobile testing in the community. This particular slide shows you the municipalities that we were, that we have been at. The number, the large number is, represents the numbers of people we have tested at that location. The two represents the number of times we've been there thus far. Please note that in some instances, when we test at a location, actually, every place that we test is open to any resident of Passaic County. But in some cases, we're also targeting, you know, specific municipalities as well. Next slide, please.
Dr. Gungill and the freeholders, I'd like to just mention one thing that I found out today. The 12 counties that did not receive CARES funding money, the state has decided to give them some of the money that the state has received. In exchange, the state is requiring each one of the counties to sign a memorandum of agreement, which in part would require each one of those counties to continue testing through the end of the year. And one of the examples in the MOA that each of those 12 counties received as a best practices was, in fact, Passaic County's at-home testing. So I thought that was, that was pretty cool, that the, that the state included that in the, in the verbiage of the MOA.
Very nice. Thanks for sharing that, Mr. De Nova. The freeholders, Mr. De Nova, and the whole team deserves a big kudos. This is unprecedented, what we're doing. It's best practices and it's, it's innovation, anyway you look at it. It's just, has not been done and still is, is not, you know, we're, we're still the only one. All right, the next part is the contact tracing. I know you hear about it a lot, so I figure, let me just let you know what you have done so far. So we've hired six individuals to do contact tracing in Passaic County. And they're going just fine, they've been working now for maybe about two months. The state has also provided 13 individuals in three batches to, to us, to the Link Health Agency. These 13 individuals are generally Rutgers students. They're getting their masters in public health. And they're provided with the John Topkins training, Rutgers training, comp care training, which is the interface that the DOH has purchased for, specifically for handling COVID-19. comcare training, which is the interface that, uh, the DOH has purchased for specifically for handling COVID-19. And they're deployed to us, uh, Passaic County Health Department for training with the idea that we will deploy them to any, uh, health department that requests it. So at our weekly meeting today with the health officers, uh, we decided that we're going to, uh, just provide them with at least one to get started. In some cases, they don't need any right now. And, um, as more and more people become on board with, uh, with the state, we're going to deploy them to all of the, uh, counties, uh, in the state. So the, the, the next bullet speaks to, uh, 126 contact tracers within Passaic County. Because many of the health departments, if not all, have hired individuals outside of what I'm mentioning to you because it is, you know, it's best practices and, uh, we've been doing that for a long time. So they asked me to, to gather that data for the state, which we did. It's now on their, uh, dashboard. And it's actually showing that of the 21 counties, Passaic County has the most contact tracers, um, doing our, our work. So it's another place that we could feel, you know, that we're at least serving our community as best that we can. And we're, we're accepting, uh, what the others are doing. Next slide, please. Um, this is just to also let you know that, uh, we are provided with, uh, data every, almost every day from DOH regarding individuals who have flown into or come into New Jersey um, by some, um, uh, general means, some public means. We're provided with names and contact information and we are required to, uh, contact those people and, um, uh, encourage them to, to voluntarily, uh, self-quarantine for 14 days. This is based on the list that is provided at the New Jersey, uh, COVID-19 dashboard. Next slide, please. This is the last slide. Again, all the things that we've been saying, wash your hands often, avoid those contacts and so on. This still, uh, these are still important things to do. As you saw from one of the earlier slides, we were in a very bad place at, at the end of March, April into May. And we were able to see that, that, uh, that small number over time, even though there is a little bit of an uptick. When you compare it to where we were, we're still a good place. And we could stay there if we continue to practice these things. It protects us, it protects our families and friends and each other. So Passaic County, if you keep doing the right thing, we can continue to shine. And that's my report for today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Freeholder reports. I don't have anything, um. Freeholder Lepore?
Uh, thank you, Director. I have 21, um, resolutions for the Public Works Committee of, for the review and, um, I'm asking the freeholders for their support. Thank you.
Freeholder Apter?
Uh, I just briefly want to, uh, the passing of Kathleen Karen, who, who we had the moment, I don't know, among others. And, uh, I'm just presented on the Freehold Representative Space Committee for last, um, for the last few years, I've had the great chance, uh, and honor to work with her. Uh, tremendous loss, uh, to Passaic County, to all our communities, um, uh, you know, that Kathleen has touched every single community in Passaic County in some way, in meaningful, obvious way that affects our families, um, and, and will so for years to come. Um, and I'm really grateful to her, her memory, and I hope we will find ways to remember her and to honor her legacy, uh, for what she did for open space and green spaces in Passaic County. And I'll also say, um, as, as somebody who used to be a, a, a government employee, uh, whether at the local, state, federal, county level, wherever it may be, sometimes, um, our, our government employees, uh, get a bad rap, uh, they are lumped in together, um, and, uh, certain cases are generalized for everybody. And I just want to say Kathleen represents, um, some of the best county employees, uh, Dr. Gungill and so many others who are putting themselves out there, who are dedicated, who really care and are, uh, in, in Dr. Gungill's, um, capacity, helping to save lives and Kathleen's capacity, helping to change communities, uh, and I'm really grateful for all our county employees, um, and, 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 and government employees we have at every level who are stepping up. Pandemic crisis, uh, so many others, uh, so I, I, I just wanted to say that on, in memory of Kathleen.
That's really nice. Thank you. Freeholder Bartlet?
Thank you, Director. Um, yeah, um, just a quick mention for anybody out there who isn't, doesn't already know this because they follow me on social media. We learned last week that the census count is going to be shortened by a month. Instead of running until October 31st, Halloween, it's going to be cut off on September 30th. That really creates a sense of urgency. We've got seven weeks left to count our hard-to-count communities. Every town has some. Uh, I brought this up on a conference call with Congresswoman Sheryl the other day. My town of Wayne has some, certainly Passaic, Patterson, um, the Valley towns, Clifton, um, and, and so forth, have communities that we still need to count. We're looking for every opportunity to get folks out there. And we've got local partners, uh, from the Census Bureau who are great about getting enumerators out to the places where we tell them they ought to be. Uh, so I just want to appeal to everybody on the board and everybody who's watching. Um, let folks know, contact people in your contact list, on your WhatsApp group, on your social media. Uh, but also if there's something coming up where a lot of folks are going to be there and it's a chance to count hard-to-count communities, young families, students, seniors, uh, let us know. We'll get census people out there and, uh, we'll make sure we get as complete a count as we can. Because as we saw with the CARES Act funding, Anthony, you pointed it out. Uh, all the counties under 500,000 population had to wait until just the other day to get funding that we've been able to spend for the last, uh, two or three months, uh, getting ahead of some of these problems. So that's all. I hope everybody's having a great August.
Thank you.
And Freeholder Bartlet, if I could just, uh, point, uh, point it out, uh, as of yesterday, I believe, uh, at the county, there's still, uh, 25% of our towns that are below the state average, uh, in reporting. Um, I, I probably not all that surprising that, you know, our Patterson, uh, Passaic Prospect Park. Um, I'm trying to think who the other, uh, maybe Halden actually as well. I think it's those four towns that are, that are under the state average, which is, uh, 65%. Um, and Passaic County, we're 63%. I think last census, we were a little over 70%. So there's a lot of work to do, not only in those four communities, but in all of the communities to try to, uh, beef up the census. I know people have been preoccupied and rightfully so with dealing with the, uh, with the pandemic. But I think it really has to be the pedal to the metal now as the, uh, as the deadline is coming quicker than we would like.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That comparison to 2010 is a little bit imperfect because 2010 is total account numbers. What we have so far is just the people who have been self-reporting because enumerators aren't even out in the field yet. But one of the messages I think we can all convey to people, uh, and it, it sounds a little bit unkind, but given what we're all dealing with in terms of COVID, if you don't want somebody coming to your door, respond online or respond by phone. Because those enumerators are going to be out in the field and they're going to be knocking on doors. They've been trained in social distancing. They're going to be masked. There's a lot of protections there the Census Bureau is providing. But at the end of the day, if you don't want to knock on your door, uh, go to my2020census.gov, uh, or call the, the toll-free number and, uh, get that reported in for your family. Because what we've been able to do, uh, you know, with CARES Act funding is entirely owing to the fact that we cleared that half million threshold 10 years ago.
John, when are, when are they going to be going door to door to do this count? I mean, now you got to shorten it by a month. So when are they going to get out there?
They start next week and that'll give them about six weeks in the field. But that's a fraction of what they had 10 years ago.
And, and Freeholder Bartlet, if we could, um, maybe coordinate with our mobile sites and maybe get some, you know, even if we had, honestly, even if we had one person, uh, there working the line would, would be helpful. So, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're scheduled through September 4th. We're just working on the September, October mobile testing. But I think it would be important for, uh, for us to have a census taker there if we could. Or if it's somebody who could be trained, then, you know, we could have staff do it as well. But, um, you know, you and I could talk about that offline, but I think that would be another way to try to reach people.
Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Freeholder Best? I know he was on before.
I'm here.
Oh, I knew you were here.
Yeah, um, so, uh, in addition to everything that everyone else mentioned, I just wanted to give an update on the, uh, name change for the Freeholder Board, the Board of Chosen Freeholders. Um, as my colleagues know, but as many people in the public may not know, uh, both houses of the state legislature passed a bill to change the name of, uh, Board of Chosen Freeholders to Board of County Commissioners. Uh, that piece of legislation has now made its way to the governor and, uh, we're expecting him to sign it to take effect on, uh, January 1st, 2021. So just wanted to, uh, give the public an update that, um, this year will be the last year of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, uh, and soon to be the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. Both John Bartlet and myself aren't thrilled of the name of County Commissioners. Uh, we much rather would like to see a Board of Supervisors or even a Board of Governors, which, uh, more reflects what we do, uh, in terms of county government. However, uh, that was the name that was presented for the state and that's where we are. So just wanted to give you an update there. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Um. Freeholder Duffy?
On the agenda tonight and planning an economic development. Uh, I also would like to, uh, shout out to, uh, Kathleen Karen. I, uh, I grew up with Kathleen. I've known her for quite a few years. She's an extraordinary woman, had some problems down the road and, and you'd never know how, how, uh, how serious they were towards the end. Uh, she was a great lady and we should, uh, do something just to remember her, her, uh, legacy in Passaic County. Also Maria Magna, who's councilwoman, I was very close to over the years. She was a, uh, she was a real fireplug. She, she helped the community. She was a great lady. And, uh, I was shocked. I know she wasn't doing well, but, uh, sorry to see her, her passing. Two great ladies, Passaic County. Over to you, great lady. I wonder, I'm going to ask you, uh, Bruce James, is he out in the hallway somewhere? I mean, what's the deal? I'm glad Hassan is on the bus, but Bruce looks like.
I've been here. I, I've been through the whole meeting, Terry. I'm right down the corner here. Apparently I'm not anywhere else, though. Including you on the agenda, which is good.
I like how you decorated the place.
Thank you, anytime. I'm home.
Brother record, brother record. For the record, I am not driving. I'm sitting in a, a stationary car.
Yeah, tell that to the police officer who's behind.
Freeholder James?
Uh, yeah, let me reiterate what Terry and Hassan said. Kathleen and I were friends going way back. Uh, I can't tell you how many calls I got from various people in various municipalities who worked with her, including the people, uh, who run the Evan with the flags in Clifton. Uh, she was key into getting the, the grant for the, uh, to finish the Kilden Action section of, of that, uh, very, uh, big display of American flags. But, you know, everybody who talked to her, uh, talked, uh, with her, uh, just has nothing but, uh, praise for her and everybody was shocked. Maria Magna and I go back, not quite as long as Terry, because I didn't grow up with her, but we go back about 45 years. She was on the, uh, what was called the Welfare Board, but it was the Board of Social Services now, back in the day when I first got on the Union Board. So I've known her since then and we got to be friends in the Hispanic Multipurpose Center, which was, uh, the nonprofit that she built, just served so many people in, in our, in our towns, uh, not just Patterson, but in Passaic County. She was a remarkable woman and left a remarkable legacy.
She really did. And, you know, we can't forget Sammy Khalifa, who was so important to all of us here at the county. I know he was, anybody needed help or any, any, anything, Sammy was always one of the first ones to volunteer. And we lost a great man when we lost Sammy. So we can't forget about him. He's a, he was a great asset to our county. Anybody else? No? Okay, let's move on to the oral portion. Can I have a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting?
I'll move that.
Freeholders, Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best? Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Madam Director, uh, we received two emails to public@passaiccountynj.org. I'd like to read them into the record. On, the first one is from, uh, Costi, uh, Papa, Papa Johnny from Little Falls. Uh, she is sending in a petition, uh, attaches a petition signed by the residents of Cheryl Court, Little Falls regarding the rainwater runoff from Patterson Ave. Although Patterson Ave roadway may not have changed during the repaving, this still does not diminish the fact that the rainwater is flowing into Cheryl Court. The local residents are calling on the county to mitigate the water runoff issue by issuing, by either installing a storm drain or creating a roadway dip to allow water to flow down Patterson Ave. This concern, this concern was brought up during the last Passaic County Freeholders meeting, uh, as well. And so for the record, and I have the petition, I'll, I'll forward that on to the freeholders. We also have a email from, uh, Jay Cohen of, of, uh, uh, he, he is, um, sending, uh, from Wannacue. The, um, his email says, the resident, uh, the recent power failures in many Passaic County communities caused hardship for our people. In Wannacue, the entire borough was without power because of a failure in a substation which services the entire borough. This is the same substation that went out during Sandy. Why can't the government insist that JCP and L maintain its equipment? JCP and L did not communicate with anyone. When I, when I called, I spoke to customer service relations person in Ohio who knew nothing. Cablevision was also, uh, was even worse in communications. They didn't even answer the phone. Who regulates our utilities? Who holds them accountable? Also, since Skyline Drive was closed due to downed trees, traffic on Ringwood Ave at County Road was impossible. I never saw a sheriff's department presence, especially at the lights near 287.
Uh, also received a, um, from, uh, the mayor of West Milford, uh, Michelle, uh, Michelle Dale, all freeholders and Mr. Anthony De Nova. I want to take a moment to thank you for all your support on of West Milford businesses via the grant funding through Passaic County. Much appreciated. Further, a special thank you to the Freeholder Duffy for attending the tour of Greenwood Lake to address the, uh, algae issue, the hab issue. Sincerely, Mayor Dale, West Milford Township. Uh, and then also, um, just, uh, two people checking in and saying hello. Uh, Latoya Chambers and Sanjay, uh, Dasi. And, uh, that, that's all the communications that I've received.
Should we give it another minute or?
While we do that, Director, because it, it, there is delay on Facebook.
Yeah.
If you'd like, I could, uh, answer some of the questions while we're waiting, Director. I know it's a little out of order, but.
No, that'd be great.
Right? A little time filler to that, or I could sing. So I, you'd probably rather have me answer the questions.
I'd really love to hear you sing. Why don't you sing the answer?
Uh, so Little Falls, I actually, uh, sent out the, um, uh, the engineering crew today. They came up with about, I think, four or five different possible solutions. Um, some better than others. So wh- what I've asked them to do is to go out there and meet with the local officials as well. So the Little Falls engineer, uh, DPW director and, uh, and the administrator and/or mayor to talk about what. to talk about what are some of those options that we can look at to try to address the concerns of the residents on Cheryl Court. So, um, again, we are continuing to, uh, to take a look at that situation and monitor it and come up with a, a solution. Jay, uh, if you're listening, I hope all as well, we haven't seen you in a while. Um, I, as far as the utilities, I'll, I'll leave that for you guys if you'd like to address that. Uh, typically, uh, yes, the Ringwood Avenue was a disaster during Skyline Drive, uh, being closed. We, we were, I did receive a phone call from, um, Mayor Mahler of Wanaque if the county could assist in trying to get, um, I believe that was JCPNL or could have, I believe it was JCPNL, possibly Orange or Rockland, I'm not sure which, uh, to remove, or at least to determine whether or not the wires that the trees were hanging on were live wires. Because if they are, obviously, we can't touch them. Um, we were able to assist Wanaque in getting them out there and opening up Skyline Drive, uh, relieving the traffic on Ringwood Avenue, which becomes a safety concern, um, for emergency vehicles if they had to get through. Um, typically, the sheriff doesn't go out there on his own unless he's called by one of the municipalities. If lights are, are out, um, I, I, I can't speak for the sheriff. I'm, I'm certain that if he was called by one of the municipalities, that he would have sent people out there. Um, but I could certainly double check that, but, um, and, and I could discuss that with the mayors as well moving forward if they, you know, if they need that help, they could have, uh, reached out. I know Ringwood had issues with their radios and the sheriff reached out to Chief Walker, uh, uh, if we could assist in, in, uh, in that. So, so I know when asked, we, we typically would respond and, um, you know, we, again, working well together with all of the mayors. So, um, I, I'm, I'm fairly certain that no fault of the towns, but, uh, they didn't ask or they thought they had the, the ability to do it themselves. And I appreciate Mayor Dale's email. Um, I know West Milford got pretty, hit pretty hard, uh, through, through that storm. So, um, she's been a real trooper, she was without her own electricity and, um, and I know it was difficult up there in West Milford. So I do thank her for, uh, acknowledging, again, I think, the great work and relationship. We've said it, uh, frequently, uh, if any positive comes out of this pandemic, it's the fact that, uh, the 16 mayors and the Board of Chosen Freeholders have really developed, uh, a good working relationship and, um, recognizing that we're all in this thing together. And, and I think moving beyond the pandemic, we're going to recognize that to provide the services that we all want to provide to the residents, that the more we work together, the more successful we're going to be. So, um, you know, Mayor Dale certainly has been a great, uh, partner in all of this, as well as the other 15 mayors in Passaic County, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Director, yeah, we, we do have one more, uh, one more Facebook comment and it's from Latoya Chambers again. Uh, "Hi, Mr. De Nova, I work in this healthcare. Can you please explain, uh, why, uh, explain to us why we didn't receive any hazard pay?" Uh, hazard or caring pay yet? Everyone swipes the badge to come into the building. I've been exposed, so sad to see, uh, choose, choose the job to stay.
So, uh, Latoya, I can tell you that, uh, the hazard pay resolution has been drafted. Uh, it has gone back and forth between the attorneys and we are actually waiting on the attorneys who represent, uh, both the CNAs and the nursing staff. Um, but it is, um, once, once the union signs off on it, uh, the Freeholder Board will, will bring it up at a meeting. We had hoped, uh, it would be today. We actually hoped it would have been last month. Um, but again, I'll, 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 I'll hold my comment about attorneys, but, uh, we are waiting for the union attorneys to, uh, uh, to give us the green light. And that's about all that I could say on that.
Thank you, Mr. De Nova. Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
I'll move.
Second. Freeholders Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to, uh, our agenda. Uh, Matt Jordan, our county counsel. Do you have any late starters, amendments?
Uh, yes, we do have, um, five late starters. I'll read the title into the record. Um, case 71 is a resolution authorizing the Board of Contract to the Education Service Commission of New Jersey to move the paving and concrete LLC to furnish the wall. Clear safety glass in numerous county facilities due to the spread of COVID-19 pursuant to NJSA 48:11-10 at Sec. Case 72 is a resolution authorizing purchase installation of Go Hand's free faucet and flushometers at the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office located at 30 King Road, Toto, New Jersey, pursuant to NJSA 48:11-10 at Sec. Case 73 is a resolution for award of contract agreement Peterson, Inc. as part of the NJDOT Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, 2016 Spruce Street Gateway Project Phase 1 in the city of Patterson, pursuant to NJSA 52:34-9 at Sec. Case 74 is a resolution for award of contract to grade construction for the superstructure reconstruction of the Spruce Street Bridge, number 1600-018 project in the city of Patterson, New Jersey, as per bid number C-20-009 and pursuant to NJSA 48:11-24. And case 75 is a resolution extending the contract by between the County Passaic and Bergen Risk Managers, Inc. for third-party administration of general mobility and worker satisfaction claims pursuant to NJAC 5:30-11.6 at Sec. Just remind all the Freeholders, if you have anything that you want voted on individually, to just make a motion and remove it from the consent agenda. That's all I have, Director.
Can I have a motion to let, uh, add the late starters, case 71 to case, uh, case 71 to case 75 to the agenda?
I'll move it. That was a lot, I'll second. Take your pick.
I'm glad we're finally moving the Spruce Street project and the bridge.
Uh, Luke, can we have a roll call?
I have Freeholder Duffy make the motion and Freeholder James, uh, second.
Whatever you have is fine.
Freeholders Apter? Bartlet? Best? Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Maybe you'll want to let me vote on this one too, Luke?
Yes.
So I'm a yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I skipped over you, I apologize.
You're right.
Okay, Director, we're, we're ready to move on to the.
Can I have a motion to accept, uh, the agenda, K1 through K75?
I will move that.
Second.
Freeholders Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the personnel agenda?
I will move that.
Second.
Freeholders Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet? Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Epstein.
Director Lozare?
Epstein.
Can I have a motion to move the bills list?
I'll move the bills list.
Second.
Freeholders Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Uh, can I have a motion to, John?
I'll move it.
Second.
Freeholders Apter? Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, be safe.
All right.
We'll see.
Bye, everybody, see you in September.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.